I don't know, it's not, yes, the difference is. Day, June the eleventh, two thousand twenty four at seven P M. We have a call to order of the planning commissioners by roll call, please.
Commissioner Newell is not present, maybe here later. Commissioner Spofford. Perfect. Commissioner Schulte. Commissioner Banford. Commissioner Kowash. Commissioner Gro. Commissioner Swanson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you very much. Uh, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty four. Commissioners, we've had a chance to look these over. If there is a motion to amend or correct or approve the minutes, I will hear that now.
Who to approve?
As written.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion made and then seconded to approve the minutes from the May fourteenth meeting. We'll just have a voice vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes say aye. Same, uh, same sign for no. It's unanimously approved. Agenda item number four is public comment, and this is an opportunity for citizens to speak on items that are not on the agenda tonight. So if there's anyone present that would like to address the planning commission, City of Dallas Planning Commission, about something that we're not planning to discuss at tonight's meeting, now's your opportunity. We'll give you three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment on anything not on our agenda this evening? Seeing none. Do we have anybody in the queue on, on the phone?
No callers.
There's no callers there. So we'll move on from the public comment period to the public hearings. So are we have three public hearings scheduled for tonight. Uh, our first public hearing, uh, is subdivision twenty-three dash O two Crystal Estates Gen Ray Properties LLC, a twenty-five lot subdivision. At the end of Academy Street at map number seven point five point three three B C, tax lot one oh five. I'm going to open that hearing and then make an announcement on how we will proceed. So this is a public hearing regarding property located at the end of Academy Street. Map number seven point five point three three B C, tax lot number one oh five. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission, and I declare this public hearing open at seven oh two P M. The applicant today has requested a continuance of the hearing. I, I read it via email. I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not going to read it verbatim, but they are essentially asking the planning commission, uh, as is their right to continue the hearing, and they're asking for a thirty day continuance. So we will hear, we will do the, we'll, we'll do the hearing for this subdivision, uh, at the next meeting, which will be July the ninth, if I'm not mistaken. That's correct. July the ninth, we will hear this, but what we do, since the public hearing is now open, if there's anybody that's present here tonight that would like to testify, because it is on our, on our agenda and the hearing is open, if you would like to present testimony on this uh, project, we would certainly entertain that, enter it into the record. So is there anyone here with, with the understanding that we're going to have a full public hearing with all the facts and findings, staff reports, applicant presentation, that will all occur on July the ninth? If it's not continued again, but that's the plan right now. But is there anyone here that would like to, uh, that would like to testify on this matter because they can't, or it's unreasonable for them to come back on, on July the ninth? Is there anyone here that would like to do that?
Do we need to read this?
Not, not, not. Thank, thank you very much. What I, what I would ask you to do, and this is the way we have to do it, is please come up to the desk here with those microphones there, and please state your name, your address, and this is so that we can communicate with you. So you're submitting testimony to the Dallas Planning Commission, so we need to have your name and your address on record, and then let us know what your, what your thoughts are as, as you see it at this point.
Okay, well, I'm Abigail Richardson. I own the property at two nine five Southeast Academy Street, and also the tax lot and one behind it, which is all adjacent to this, um, the subdivision going in. I just had a couple questions. I was hoping to get clarifications. I have concerns about the traffic because it doesn't appear that there's an outlet. It looks like there's potentially one in the future. Um, another question I had was concerning the, I just want a clarification on the, the river walk. The city is trying to go through that area. It looks like it's affecting that. And I mean, along with traffic, I'm also concerned about emergency services being able to access this. This looks like a really tight area back in here, and it looks like there's been a lot of documentation, traffic studies and whatnot, but being an occupant on that street and knowing the traffic on that street, it's already really narrow and really tight, and it's a stop sign at the end, and sometimes getting out of there can take a long time, especially during, during traffic, a lot of traffic. So I think I just want to kind of just adjust my concerns for the amount of traffic this is going to bring to the neighborhood, and also, you know, what is, how it's going to affect the river and the natural area back there.
Understood. Understood, and I, you know, having read through the, the staff report that we had planned on hearing this evening, uh, and the applicant's application, all of those issues that you raised, uh, will be addressed at the public hearing, and if you want to, uh, we invite you to come back on July the ninth and hear the whole, hear the whole thing, and I also can invite you that if you would like to submit testimony in writing to the City of Dallas in advance of that meeting, that, that testimony, that written testimony will be included in the record as your testimony is this evening will be. So if you wanted to maybe expand upon your, your concerns, uh, you could certainly, uh, submit those in writing, and we will we're tentatively planning on hearing, uh, uh, this, uh, application on July the ninth. Okay? Well, thank you very much for being here.
Can you tell her about the phone opportunity if she's not?
Oh, there's also a call in opportunity. Did you receive a notice?
I did, yes.
Okay, I, I believe there's information on the notice that tells you if you wanted to call in, participate electronically, that's an option for you as well, and thank you for coming down and uh, apologies that we're not going to get to it this evening, but we, we follow the process according to the code and the law, so.
Understandable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone else here that would like to testify this evening, uh, on this, uh, subdivision application that is going into continuance? Seeing none, what we need to do, commissioners, is we need to vote to grant the continuance. Uh, the request that they made is for uh, thirty days. They're, they are permitted a hundred and twenty days continuance according to state land use law. They're requesting thirty days, and that puts us at the July meeting. So I would entertain a motion and a second, and we can have a vote on to grant the continuance for thirty days.
Can we ask a question about that at this point? Is that okay?
Go ahead. We have, we have counsel available here.
How does that fit into the overall hundred and twenty days? It doesn't change that deadline, correct?
So what the applicant has done is they have in writing in their letter today, um, they have put in their consent to extend the hundred and twenty days by an initial thirty days.
Okay.
So I would recommend that if you choose to grant their request that you do a motion to continue the hearing till a date certain of July ninth, um, and then continue the hearing at that point.
Okay. Thank you. That clarifies.
Appreciate it. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we, um, grant the continuance to July ninth.
Second.
Okay, maiden seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Those the same? Hearing none? Okay, so the, uh, the hearing has been continued, and we'll hear it on July the ninth, and I'm going to close tonight's public hearing with one, uh, submittal of testimony, and we will pick this up again next month. Thank you. The applicant, and now, Dr. Edwards, and I see that you're here. Is there anything that you'd like to, to to say? I should have asked you, but I, I want to give you the opportunity.
No, uh, we just need a little more time because we didn't have time to reply to the engineering questions, and the engineer wasn't able to answer all of them.
So if we're going to take additional thoughts, we need to reopen the hearing.
I just, I, I, I didn't acknowledge the applicant as being in the room, so thank you, thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, so we'll take that up, uh, again next month, and if, if you came to hear about it, and I'm sorry, we'll see you next month, and again, you'll have the opportunity to participate, uh, online or via telephone and, and we'll move on, and we'll cover that then. Our second public hearing this evening is an annexation, uh, request. I'll also mention before we open the public hearing, commissioners, I had staff make copies for each of you of the script that I use when we conduct these public hearings. And I think it will be helpful for us, because I'm up here reading in order the way we, the way the procedures and processes are, are required to go, but you don't have that in front of you. So that we make sure that we're, yeah, we're going in the, doing things in the right order. There's a staff report, the applicant presentation, we can ask questions. There's rebuttal, there's testimony, there's rebuttal. Uh, and then there is deliberation. So I, I so stick these in, in your drawers or take them home with you, but I want you folks to be able to follow along with me so that as we conduct these hearings, that we're doing them in the proper order, and we're using all the proper protocols to make sure that we're doing everything, uh, a hundred percent correctly. So, uh, so for this one, this will be the script for legislative type four public hearing. And that's the, the type three would have been the subdivision. The type four is the annexation zone change. So this next public hearing is regarding annexation twenty-four O two and zone change twenty-four O one at property located at three twenty-five James Howe Road, and is a ten acre multifamily development proposal, tax ID five seven five two oh five and one six two three two zero. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission, and I now declare this public hearing open at seven twelve P M. As the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I am required to read the following statement. The failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the planning commission and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based upon that issue. So please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria you believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria are found in the staff report. At this time, I'll ask if any members of the planning commission has a conflict of interest, a site visit, or an ex parte contact to declare regarding the annexation zone change, uh, application on James Howe Road. Seeing none, we will move on. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin the staff report followed by questions of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of fifteen minutes. This may be followed by questions from the planning commissioners. Thereafter, we will hear from all other interested parties in presenting testimony on this item before the commissioner. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes to rebut any testimony that was offered. After we've heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the planning commission to deliberate, and then ask if there's a motion for recommendation in response to this application proposal. So at this time, we'll start off with the staff report. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes. Um, so as you indicated, uh, this is a request for annexation, uh, of ten acres into the city limits and a zone change from the current county zoning, uh, to the city's own residential medium density. Uh, the property is at, uh, three twenty-five, uh, James Howe Road. That's up in the, uh, northwest part of town. Uh, as you can see indicated there by the, the circle. Um, zooming in, uh, we can see that it is, uh, currently, uh, farm acreage, um, uh, adjacent to, uh, James Howe Road, um. The surrounding area is currently, uh, being developed as part of the Wyatt nodes. You can see the Forest Ridge subdivision under construction there across the street. Um, but much of the surrounding area remains undeveloped. Uh, zooming further on, we can see that there's a, uh, some kind of, uh, barn structure there on the site, um, as well as some fields. The, uh, the zoning of the site, um, currently has Polk County zoning, um, and so the proposed zoning would be the, uh, the medium density residential. That's, uh, consistent with the zoning on the, uh, uh, west side of James Howe, further down the road there at, uh, at the intersection with Ellendale, so, uh, as far as comprehensive plan, um, the whole area is designated as residential, um, and the comprehensive plan doesn't go into detail as to, uh, uh, specific zoning types, um, that's left to the locational policies within comprehensive plan. And the staff report goes into some greater detail as to how the application, uh, satisfies and responds to the, uh, approval criteria for that. Um, looking further at the site, there are some environmental constraints. On the west side, there is a, uh, natural drainage way, uh, riparian corridor, and, uh, the wetland delineation that was performed for the site did find three, uh, wetland areas, um, but the majority of the site is, uh, uh, developable, so. Uh, as far as approval criteria for annexations, there's six approval criteria. Um, the site has to be within the urban growth boundary, which it is. Uh, the proposed zoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, and so that's who we're referring to, those, uh, comprehensive plan policies that are, uh, detailed further in the, the written staff report. Um, the site has to be contiguous to the city limits, um, which it is. Uh, James Howe Road is currently the city limits in this area. Uh, public facilities, that being the streets, the water, the sewer system, um, as well as, uh, services like parks, police, and all of that. Uh, fire have to have capacity to support development of the site. Um, annexation is consistent with the annexation policies in the comprehensive plan, which is um, uh, another set of policies in the comp plan. Um, and, uh, this is not in a master plan node, uh, so it, the final criteria does not apply, but if it was in the master plan node, then it would have to include a master plan, uh, application, which again, doesn't apply in this case. Uh, for zone changes, there's, uh, five approval criteria. Uh, the request has to be consistent with the statewide planning goals, and the written staff report goes into greater detail on that. Uh, the request has to be consistent, again, with the comprehensive plan for the City of Dallas. Uh, public facilities have to have adequate capacity to support the development. Uh, the change, uh, has to be in the public interest, um, and the request has to conform to the transportation planning rule under state law. Um, and so taking a little bit of a deeper dive on that, um, the O A R surrounding that, um, addresses proposals for, uh, zone changes in this case, um, or other kind of, uh, post acknowledgement plan amendments that would significantly affect the transportation facility. Uh, significantly affect in this case, uh, would be to degrade the performance of an existing or planned transportation facility that's otherwise projected to not meet the performance standards, uh. In this case, uh, the Levens, uh, Le- Levens and Ellendale intersection, uh, would be significantly affected. Um, it would degrade the performance of that intersection, um, even though that, uh, intersection is currently, uh, not projected to meet the performance standards, it would, uh, worsen the, the impact on that. Degraded the performance. So, um, when we determine that there is a significant effect, um, the O A R specified that, uh, the government has to ensure that the allowed land uses are consistent with the performance standards um, of those transportation facilities measured at the end of the planning period um, through one of the combination of the remedies that are listed in the law. Um, one of those, uh, remedies, uh, relates to development agreements. Um, uh, so that would be, uh, providing measures through a development agreement or similar, you know, mechanism uh, that would, uh, address that deficiency, um, and as part of that, the government would specify, you know, when those, those improvements would be, uh, performed. So, um, staff recommendation ultimately is that the planning commission make a recommendation to the city council in support of the annexation and the zone change application with the condition of approval that the developer enter into a development agreement uh, to pay six percent of the total project cost for improving the Ellendale and Levens intersection um, in such a way that the, uh, significant effect of the, uh, zone change is mitigated. Um, their, uh, traffic impact analysis indicated they'd be responsible for about six percent of the traffic through that intersection. So that's where that six percent, uh, number kind of comes from. Uh, but that, uh, is the staff recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions that, uh, that folks may have.
Hey, I'll remind the planning commissioners that, uh, this is a type four uh, land use decision in that we are not making the final decision. We are making a recommendation to the city council who will then, uh, formally hear, we made another public hearing, uh, consider for adoption and the, uh, uh, annexation and the zone change. What we're not doing here this evening is we're not analyzing any sort of a, a development plan. Uh, in the staff report submitted by the applicant, they showed a layout as to how, uh, the development might occur, but that's not, that's just for demonstration purposes. That could change by the time they get actually get around to developing the property. What we're considering today is the annexation of the property into the city limits of the City of Dallas and the zone change to city zoning from county zoning. So does the planning commissioners have any questions for staff on the staff report? John, go ahead.
Uh, it's, it's a generic question, not necessarily specific to this, but in annexations. I haven't been through that many of these. Is there, and I see the cost, um, impact of this, uh, Ellendale Levens fix that we have to be have the capacity to provide city services and all that. But is there an overall economic analysis for the city? This says this development over time will create this much tax revenue, and it's going to cost us this much to provide the services in total. Is that ever done? And if not, why not?
Um, so I can't say if that's been done for, for this specific part of town. It's not part of the, uh, application approval criteria, but I do know that that's something that we've been looking at specifically with some of our area plans, like the Mill Site redevelopment plan and Lockreall Node development plan. Um, we've been looking at that kind of overall economic impact as part of those, um, but we haven't really been doing that piecemeal with individual, uh, property, uh, like this. Um, it generally multi-family uses, um, are a better financial deal for the city because there's less public infrastructure to maintain uh, on a per person basis than there would be if you had, you know, subdivisions with, you know, one acre tracks where there's all the road and pipe in between each person. Um, with, with, uh, the higher densities, you have less infrastructure essentially to maintain per person because they're closer together, so.
But we have more schools and all the rest of it as well. It just seems curious to me that we would go through a process like this of annexation, not knowing what the result will be ten years from now on the city. It just seems wrong to me that, that that would be the case.
I, I, I would say, John, that at, at the time when when the city goes through the process of expanding its urban growth boundary, it's taking into consideration that the urban growth boundary, uh, property within the urban growth boundary is slated for future inclusion of the city, and a lot of it is, uh, looked into at the time at the urban growth. If, if there was not adequate capacity to serve this property, the urban growth boundary would not have been expanded in that area. So some of the work that you're thinking about has been done previously when we allowed our urban growth boundary to extend beyond the boundary of this property. So if, when it came into the urban growth boundary, and I don't even know when that was, Chase, many.
So, um, this would have been part of the original earth, urban growth boundary as it was drawn in nineteen seventy. Um, so we have not done, uh, urban growth boundary expansion for, uh, residential purposes in the history of Dallas.
Especially to the west, yeah.
Right, the only, the only two U G B expansions we've done were for the golf course, which is open space, and, uh, for some industrial land down on the south side of town. So this was part of the original urban growth boundary when they drew it in the seventies. Why did they draw it as they did? I wasn't around back then. I, I can't answer that unfortunately.
To answer my question, it's, I, it sounded like something's missing. You were saying it's not, it's procedural we don't normally do. But that's good enough. Hey, one more quick question. And I don't, I'm going to mistake this, so please correct me. At the old mill presentation, you made a comment that I retained a number of six hundred and something dwelling units somewhere in the pipeline. Is this part of that?
Um, yes, this was part of that total.
Six hundred and twenty? Not building permits, but units?
That we've had, uh, discussions with, uh, property owners or applicants about, um, how how many of those will actually translate into building permits in the future. We have lots of meetings on those sorts of things, but this was one of the properties that fed into that number.
And John, just the other reason we can't get a specific number is because all we're doing is bringing it into the city. The developer has an idea for a subdivision. We don't know how many lots, we don't know how big they are, we don't know anything. So we can't really put a financial number on it. That'll all happen when we actually get the subdivision plan. And it'll be clear as to what, but there's no part of that that's that's an analysis that gets done for these because you just generally add properties into the city and assume that they're going to add to the tax base. But it's, I would think anyway, that it's just too esoteric to to try and come up with a number when you can't really at this point.
And it may not even be a subdivision.
And it may not, well, it's, we're zoning it residential medium density. We have a rough idea of what that would be, but the constraints like the environmental, the slow, all that other stuff. And what the developer wants to do, we're going to affect how that specifically and and how expensive a houses they, you know, that end up getting built there. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for staff on staff report before we hear from the applicant? Seeing none? Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll get out here. I just have one quick question, the six percent. Does that happen when the intersection gets designed and we get it? How is that, when is that six percent going to be paid or they're just putting in a an agreement to pay it when it gets figured out and when the project gets designed and and presumably built so that then you can take six percent out of that total budget? And that's what they end up paying?
Right, so I know that there's been some discussion at the upper management level and kind of the parameters around that. What ultimately will be agreed upon, I don't have the details on, but the general concept is that they'll pay sort of their proportionate share of that improvement. So the actual mechanizations of how that happens.
Sure.
Not really an approval.
But it doesn't happen now and they don't have a number really.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff on the staff report? Sorry, Andy. You're not, you're not in my.
I know.
That's why you had to lean in.
I'll move more.
Okay, so now we'll hear from the applicant. So applicant applicant team, please step up to our desk. And as a reminder, you've got fifteen minutes to present and please state your name and your address for the record before you begin your presentation. Thank you for being here.
And that's that's mailing address, not necessarily your residence address.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, so that we can mail the official public notices.
All right, great. Well, thank you, commissioners. My name is Dwight Untie. My address is P O Box sixteen twenty, Gresham, Oregon. I I don't think I'll be taking fifteen minutes. I really just wanted the opportunity to introduce myself. Share just a brief, a few comments with you about our background, what we do. I think there's a slide up right now of some recent development activity on our part. I think the things I just wanted to share briefly was that we're an Oregon-based real estate development, construction and property management firm. We're long-term investors in everything we do. We're not a build and break or speculative type developer. We've completed over two thousand units of multifamily housing in twenty-four separate developments. And we've really been focused since about two thousand ten on smaller communities, tertiary markets, where there's often a real defined need for additional multifamily housing. And, you know, sort of that ties in with my next little set of comments, which is I just wanted to share with you, why Dallas for us? Why are we in your community and looking at a long-term investment here? Well, first, based on your housing needs analysis, it really does appear that there's a very defined need for additional multifamily housing, some more housing choices seem to be in order for the community and based on our own private research, we would agree with that. Importantly, you have a very attractive quality type community that in our opinion is very attractive. You know, there's a strong movement. I think we are all aware that people are have been leaving high-density urban centers, have been seeking a more authentic, a more real, a smaller community lifestyle where they can, you know, better connect with with family and community. And I think that that's what Dallas speaks to real loudly to me when I come through. I see a charming downtown that's very walkable. You'll see some of our developments are more tuned to historic Main Street district development than the current project we're talking about. Someday I would love to talk to you about doing something like this in your historic downtown. The other thing is I think these types of markets, your community is a size that's often overlooked by a lot of developers. It's just, it's just not, you guys are not on the radar. And I think you should be for quality development. And I think you have a very defined housing need and we would hope to help address that. So that's really what I wanted to share and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Planning commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? And again, we're considering annexation and zone change, not development. Go ahead, John.
Tying onto what you just said.
Okay.
What if I read it here tonight, though? But what is the horizon typically for a project like this? Goes through all the cycles and all planning. Is this a ten, twenty, thirty or two year?
I think that the horizon for this project from our point of view is probably something that we would try to get started and underway in a couple of years. I mean, right now, it's it's hard for me to be pinpoint accurate on that because of the interest rate environment that we're in right now and the restricted lending environment that we're in. But we have a significant experience and we're pretty confident we can put all the pieces together. And I'm assuming if the annexation and zone change goes through that, you know, we would be then moving on to working on a more refined development plan that then subsequently come back and actually be submitting to the city, but that's my my best outlook right now.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant, Carol?
Just for curiosity, what funding types are you putting into the property?
Well, our projects are typically financed with a combination of our own private equity, which is right now in this market, it takes a substantial amount, right? More down payment to buy a house, a lot more down payment to create a new development. And then we use conventional bank financing for construction financing. And then typically, once the project is complete and fully leased, then we take out long-term permanent financing. And as I mentioned, we're long-term investors in every project we do. We don't have any interest in selling them. You just have interest in keeping them. And as a result, I think that's a benefit for communities because I believe we're a lot more attentive to quality and durability and livability of the community because we know we're making a substantial investment for a long horizon.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for the applicant? Is there a chance? Okay, hearing none?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Stand by because if anyone testifies, you'll have an opportunity to rebut any testimony that we hear. So now we'll hear from any folks that are in attendance tonight who would like to address the planning commission on this item. So please raise your hand if you would like to testify on this agenda item and the application before us. And there's still no one in the queue on the phone. I see some discussion. Is there anybody that would like to testify?
Can we ask questions or is it just?
So you're, well, your your questions will be entered into the record as testimony, whether or not the applicant will have an opportunity to rebut anything you say. So chances are you'll get a good opportunity to have your your question answered. So come on up. By the way, we totally appreciate that, you know, we we do this once a month. Some of the professional folks do this all the time, so we understand this little odd situation. It's kind of like being in a courtroom. It feels that way anyway. So please state your name, your 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 address for the record and and any questions or concerns or or statements you'd like to make, go for it.
My name is Alan Casey. I live at five fifty-three Northwest Crater Lake Drive. Is that the only thing I need to say? Okay. And then just questions, I know the the paperwork said medium density. I'm just kind of curious what that means. I know that can be pretty broad. I know that down towards the corner of Ellendale and James Howe, they're looking at doing maybe some larger apartment complexes. I don't know if if that, you know, the pictures we just saw were larger complexes or medium density can mean just single-family houses or what that means. So I'd like to know more about that. And then with the the intersection there at Ellendale and Levens. If I understood right, the the builder would be responsible to pay six percent of any upgrades to that. So I know that my understanding is that we, the city, some of our funding are like we're trying to think how to word that. I just want to make sure that we we can afford to do that. And then also, how is it going to affect other intersections just down the road? I used to live by the the D R V. And there at Jasper and Ellendale, that is a tough spot to get out of. That's going to put a lot more traffic there. And then also at Main Street and Ellendale. So just curious if any upgrades are going to be done to those as well. Okay, and those are my questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Is there one else that would like to offer testimony on this application at this time?
Including questions.
Including questions. Hearing none? Okay. Does the planning commission, no, no, allow the applicant?
Rebuttal first?
Sure, I I'm sorry, no, now we have an opportunity. We might have some questions. Does anybody have any questions for the person that offered testimony? I'm sorry. I handed out the script, everybody, and now I'm not using it. Okay, seeing seeing none. So applicant, if you want to come up and address any of these concerns, the medium density housing, I can say as you're walking away, is is defined in the Dallas Development Code. And it's also a part of the staff report that's available online. If you didn't get one, they're they're here this evening. But it's a it's a density level for number of units per acre that's defined in the code, so.
Yeah, I really don't have any rebuttal. I mean, I thought the questions were fair and I I'm wondering if it would be more appropriate if staff responded to the question about how you define medium density housing.
That's fair. That's fair. Thank you. Chase, we do that?
If you'd like to move into the section on staff comments, we can certainly.
Okay.
Questions for staff, I guess.
Let's let's, so the applicant has 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 had their opportunity to speak to the testimony that we received. So now we ask, is there any other public testimony that we would like to hear on this proposal this evening? Are there any final questions or comments from staff or staff or the city attorney or questions?
So. Yes, so that's where I would comment in response to the questions. So the medium density residential zone, it allows six to sixteen dwelling units per acre. The way that we calculate multifamily is based on the number of bedrooms, so it's not a pure straight number. It's kind of a fractional calculation when it comes to apartments. But as far as allowed uses, single-family homes, duplexes, townhomes, you know, triplexes, fourplexes, zero lot line development apartments, again, up to the the density cap are all essentially allowed in that medium density zone subject to the minimum and maximum density standard. So. Then as far as the city's funding for transportation, we do have the Ellendale and Levens intersection on the city's capital improvement program projects list. So it is proposed to be funded in the in the foreseeable future in the next, I want to say like three years, right? Yeah, if you want to. Or or you have Tom answer it, I guess, kind of your call.
I'm Brian Lada, City Manager. So yeah, the city has applied for, we've already studied that intersection. We've designed it for what we want the improvement to be. It'll be a signalized intersection with a traffic signal. We have hundred percent plans on the shelf ready to go when we get funding. And so we also did a study with the school district last year through ODOT for safe house to school. And we have now applied for construction funding through that program for about two million dollars. We are hopeful to get funded on that, but we won't know until the fall of this year. Regardless of whether or not we get any funding or full funding for that project, unless the six percent that this applicant is bringing in. We will do the project next summer, so not this year, but next year. That's the plan. And so the development agreement that we're entering into with this applicant contingent upon the goal of the project, the annexation zone change, we'll we'll call in that once the project's completed. But we will fund it and whether we fund it with a grant funding or a combination of system development charges and street funds from the city's budget. But we have the money in hand today. It's just if we can get some state funding to offset that, so we're not spending, you know, a lot of our street money, then we'll do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then the follow-on question that was about impacted other intersections. So the traffic analysis that was done did indicate some impact of the Jasper intersection and recommended some restriping of that intersection, adding a turn lane. That's just paint, so that's fairly straightforward to to make happen. And it would not have a significant impact on the the Main Street intersection. So no, no improvements would be triggered to Main Street as as part of this project, so.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your for your testimony. I hope your questions were answered. And I'll also let you know that, again, what we do this evening will be a recommendation to the city council. And so there's another opportunity to have a public hearing with our elected officials at a later date, should we agree to approve to to pass it on in the city council. So thank you very much. So any other comments or questions for staff or the city attorney before I close the hearing?
I have one comment.
Go ahead.
The applicant was talking about the transportation plan and and gave some information about the different intersections and I noticed that they had percentages of each of usage at each intersection. But they didn't. They said only five percent of the people would be going down James Howe. And I noticed that they didn't include calculations in the intersections that go down Ellendale to Levens. They did not include the fact that those would also increase. And so I think there's a little issue in that data. They might want to relook at it.
Transportation.
That's in the actual applicant information about the transportation.
The transportation.
Yeah, I just noticed they didn't include. Their assumption was that almost everyone would go down James Howe and they didn't include the increase of traffic for some of the intersections that came before Levens.
Right. I have my own idea, but I'm going to let Chase answer the question.
Okay.
Well, it looks like there were six study intersections, all of them on Ellendale. James Howe, Wyatt, Douglas, Levens, Jasper and the Main Street Kings Valley Highway intersection. So it looks like those were all included as part of the traffic impact analysis.
Right, but when they make the assumption about where the traffic's going to go, I don't think they included the vehicle trips appropriately. And maybe I'm misreading it. I hope I am. Because if only five percent is going the other direction, then those intersections are between Levens and the project. The project.
I mean, it it does look like they're showing increases at all of the intersections. Um, yeah, I'd have to uh, to read through a little bit further to see if.
I just wanted to clarify that it looked a little odd to me and maybe. Maybe I just didn't understand table five, but. It looked like they were making assumptions about where traffic would go when they already said it wasn't going to go that way.
Oh, I see. You're looking at like the trip uh, generation distribution.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like figure three and figure five, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, so those look like it's. Cause, yeah, okay. I mean, it should be putting ninety-five percent of that traffic on West Ellendale.
Be the way I looked at it, but it looked a little funny.
Yeah, cause but table five, they don't really have like total.
But they have the C percentages.
Right.
And some of them weren't changed and some of them were, but they were in the same pathway. I don't know. It it could be totally fine. I just, it looked a little off.
I, I, I think those are vehicle. Overcapac, number of vehicles overcapac.
Uh huh, yes.
So if this subdivision is only adding six percent to that one intersection. It may be that the number of trips for a whatever size subdivision could be done is so small a percentage. Of what's already on the road that it doesn't seem, but I I.
I I don't know, that could be.
It could be. I know that the firm who did the traffic analysis.
I don't know.
Knows what they're doing, but yeah.
That's not my expertise area.
There's a traffic.
All right, Tom Gilson from Public Works. Um, if figure five, that five percent is traffic heading west. On Ellendale.
Yeah.
So they're anticipating coming down James Howe, heading west.
Absolutely.
That's ninety-five going the other way.
Yes.
So then if you do the totals on the other figures, there's fifteen percent going up Levens. Thirty percent going down Main, thirty-five going.
Yes.
East on Ellendale and fifteen going north.
Yes.
That adds up to a hundred.
Yeah, I understand that.
So that's a hundred percent of the traffic from this development is accounted for, and that's their their distribution as they leave. So that's their anticipated distribution.
So there's no growth of distribution at Douglas, Wyatt, Howe?
Well, no, uh, so that's the kind of the final distribution. So obviously, the ninety-five percent. That is making it towards Levens, Main Orchard.
Okay.
East of Dale has also gone through Douglas, Wyatt.
That's what I'm saying.
We, but yeah, they don't, so they're they're not going to put ninety-five, ninety-five, ninety-five.
No, I don't expect that.
Yeah, but those were counted in those intersections, the study of, yeah, the, that's kind of the summary report you have there. The total traffic report's about two hundred pages, so I mean, we could throw it in there, but it would add a lot to the second. So they analyzed all of.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, any other questions before I close the public hearing? Okay, so I now declare this public hearing closed. At seven forty-nine P M. So we can now deliberate uh, on this topic by the commission. Now I'll remind us again that this is a type four decision where what we are recommending. Or considering for recommendation is uh, to the city council to approve the annexation and the zone change, so. Who would like to begin deliberations, if there are any?
Procedural question, do all annexations go to the city council?
Correct. And a zone changes. Almost always would very rarely never not be a part of it.
Yes.
Anyone else? So it's in the urban growth boundary and we're considering annexation and zone change residential medium density. Okay, uh, without, unless there's further deliberation, I don't have any uh, deliberative comments. On this proposal, I think it's thorough and I will look forward to seeing. A development here somewhere down the road, uh.
I'm glad we're getting more medium density.
That's right, that's right. And, you know, we've been through all the discussions that that, over the past several months about our uh. Lack of uh, housing options, particularly in the uh, multifamily rental market area, so I think that uh. It's a step in the right direction in the continuing development of the city of Dallas, so. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to make the recommendation to city council.
Yeah, as stated, happy to see um. Medium density residential coming into conference at plans in the city limits, so I want to make a motion to recommend that the city council prove the annexation of the subject property. And approve zone change to residential medium density with the condition. Right, just as it's presented. I don't know what condition you're referring to.
There's a recommended condition of this paying the six percent.
Yep, as stated.
Okay.
In the report.
Okay, so we have, uh, okay, we have a motion to. Make the recommendation to city council on the annexation zone change, including the uh, condition. For the intersection upgrade.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded, uh, let's just do a voice call to all those uh, i- in favor of. Approval to recommend this to the city council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Uh, the commission's recommendation tonight will be forwarded to the city council for their consideration. At an upcoming meeting, notice of the public hearing before the city council will be sent to all the participants of record and anyone within. Uh, you know, the the notification zone surrounding the property, so. Thank you, applicant. Thank you, folks that presented testimony and. We will look forward to uh, further discussion on this at a public hearing at the city council at a date to be determined. Thank you very much. Is everybody good? Do we need a break? Cooking along? Okay, we do.
Just five.
Okay, so what we're going to do right now, we have one more public hearing uh, this evening, but I'm going to uh, take a five-minute break. So we're going to resume. It's seven fifty-two. We will be back at seven fifty-eight. Is site design review twenty-four oh three. And a variance twenty-four dash zero five for Polk County Behavioral Health. Okay, so now I'm referring commissioners back to, we're back at a type three public hearing. Uh, quasi judicial type three public hearing. You have a script in front of you. Uh, this public hearing is regarding property located at one eighty-two Southwest Academy Street. This is an official public hearing of the Dallas Planning Commission, and I now declare this public hearing open at seven fifty-nine P M. As the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I will read the following statement. The failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the planning commission. And all interested parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the state land use board of appeals. Based upon that issue, please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria listed on the staff report. Or to criteria in the Dallas Development Code you believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria are found in code section, uh, Dallas Development Code four point two. Point zero six zero point A, site design review approval criteria. And D D C five point one point zero three zero point B, class B variance approval criteria. At this time, I will ask any members of the planning commission, if you have a conflict of interest, a site visit, or an ex parte contact and declare regarding this application. Seeing none, we will move along. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. And we'll begin in the staff report, followed by questions to staff. Thereafter, we'll hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of fifteen minutes. And this may be followed by questions from the planning commission. Thereafter, we'll hear from all other interested parties in presenting testimony on this item before the commission. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. Then one, we will then provide the applicant with five minutes to rebut any testimony that was received. Excuse. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the commission to deliberate and then ask if there's a motion in response to this proposal. In this case, the planning commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. At this time, we'll start with the staff report. So may we have the staff report, please?
Yes, so, um, oop, nope, sorry, I forgot to delete that slide. Um, okay, so this is a site design review uh, and variance for Polk County's behavioral health building. Uh, the address uh, for uh, yeah, notices was one eighty-two Southwest Academy Street, that being the address of the. Existing academy building. Uh, we will be assigning a new address for the new building, which will have a main street address. Um, but the address of the current building on the site is one eighty-two, so there you go. Um, the request is to construct a ten thousand square foot uh, office uh, with variance to uh, certain design standards. So uh, for site design review, um, there's five criteria. Um, the application has to be complete, um, the underlying land use district standards have to be met. Um, that'd be the central business district standards in this case. Um, any non-conforming development on the site has to be upgraded. Uh, the design standards of Article Three uh, are met and any pre-existing conditions of approval are satisfied. Um. For variance, there is uh, five criteria. Um, the variance has to be necessary because the subject code provision does not account for special or unique circumstances of the site. Uh, variance is the minimum necessary um, to accommodate for that uh, that circumstance. Um, there's special provisions for uh, certain things. Um, and then uh, doesn't c- conflict with other city policies and results in no foreseeable harm to the property owners or the. Adjacent property owners or the public. So staff report goes into a fair bit of detail on uh, kind of those those individual approval criteria. Um, looking at the uh, the application itself. Um, so one eighty-two Southwest Academy Street, that's in the downtown core. Um, so looking here at the at the air view of the city, um, you can see the the courthouse there in the uh, the bottom uh, right corner. And the academy building over there on the left-hand side with the uh, uh, site of the new building there circled in the red. Uh, zooming in on that site. You can see the existing academy building with the uh, the white roof there on the on the left. And then uh, for those of you familiar, the uh, the hotel that's there right by the Main Street Bridge, that's the the green roofed building there. So the academy, uh, the rotary stage is the rainbow colored uh, thing to the uh, the south of the site there. So this is the area where the development is being proposed. Um, as part of the development, um, a significant portion of the parking lot would be removed. Um, that parking lot area would be where the new structure is constructed. Um, and replacement parking uh, built on the current uh, green area within the the marked uh, area. Looking at the site plan. Um, we can see the the building footprint um, and the new parking area. Um, so as we evaluate this, um, there's the the new building highlighted in orange there. There's uh, two uh, main constraints that we're looking at as we look at uh, the variance specifically. Um, the variance is related to the uh, uh, the build-to-line standard. Um the total number of parking spaces does decrease slightly. Um but that's not really relevant to the approval because uh there's no minimum number that's required. As far as the architectural rendering of the building, um the windows, the the siding, the the belly bands, the the face. Um all of those standards seem like they can be met, um and I haven't put together slides going through all of those, but the staff report. Um has some greater detail in regards to the architectural standards. Um and the building seems to be able to meet all of those uh standards. Really, it's the the build to line issue that uh that brings it to you today. So um with that, um staff are recommending um approval of the application. Uh with essentially three conditions. Um one that they uh get a grading permit from Dallas Public Works and uh. Comply with the applicable standards for development on a floodplain under chapter two point seven. Um kind of standard boilerplate on that one. Um that they get all required building permits, receive final inspection from your building department, again, standard boilerplate on that one. And then a little bit of a special one for this one. Um at the existing driveway approaches, be evaluated for ADA compliance and uh be replaced if they are noncompliant. Um. Obviously ADA has been around for a while, and so as we uh um are. Seeing development around town, we're making a a bigger push to. Ensure that any non ADA uh driveway approaches are are being updated. Um for a long time, we kind of weren't doing that, and so we wanna be. Uh more proactive in uh in that uh regard going forward. Um especially in light of some lawsuits that have gone elsewhere. Uh we don't wanna be in that position, so. Um that's kind of the the recommendation here is these uh three conditions of approval. I'm happy to uh answer any questions that uh the planning commission may have. Uh but that's what I got for you.
Planning commissioners, do we have any questions of staff? I've got one or two, but I'll let everyone else go first. Questions?
I've got one if nobody else does. Go ahead, Andy. So I'm assuming that third condition that the driveway be replaced. That it would be replaced to meet to bring it up to ADA standards and not just replaced.
Yes, uh replacing uh nonconforming with a nonconforming would make no sense.
Okay, as long as that's it's understood to be inherent in that replacement, I'm good with that.
Okay, uh my quest, my one of my questions is sort of related to that uh in the process of of. The driveway we're talking about is the one that comes off of Main Street there uh between Rotary Stage and this new development. Is there gonna be pedestrian access? There gonna be sidewalk built for this building from?
Yes, and so as we um look again at the site plan, um sorry. Uh so there is a pedestrian walkway that's being shown that would be constructed. That's a a new addition um there on the south side of the driveway. Um with a crosswalk then to the uh the new uh building. Um they're also showing a a new walkway around the existing parking lot to connect the new building to the existing academy building. Um so there's uh some some internal circulation paths, um that'd be. Um part of this, including a new pedestrian connection out to Main Street where there is currently not a pedestrian connection to Main Street, so.
Next.
Um they're also showing um on the north side of the driveway, another um pathway and sort of a plaza space. Um kind of in that right of way area. Although it's shown on their plans, that's not part of their current application um and would take place in the right of way, so. Kind of contingent upon future uh uh future right of way vacation if that were to ever occur. Um but conceptual plan for what that could look like.
This is probably just a clarifying question. Um. I I don't underst- I I guess I don't understand the usage of both the buildings, but. Um. Are we doubling the size of the offices? Are we? Making it a third bigger, but the parking lot is smaller?
Um I'm I'm sure that the applicant can can better speak towards uh utilization of the buildings.
I know there's more than one party in there, so I'm just trying to get an idea of.
Right, yeah, Polk County has a number of different offices um that are kind of in this area, so they can they can speak to uh greater detail on that.
And parking is not a requirement.
I understand that. I'm just trying to think logistically, where do they go?
Right, right.
I've got one more.
I have. So, yeah, I mean, I struggle with this. I feel like the parking should be centralized and we can hear the. Reasoning, I mean, I understand uh how it's been presented, but. There's a spatial component to having the building to the street, you know, you're entering Dallas, it'd be nice to see a building rather than a parking lot to that end. Other buffer yards or anything proposed um along the east side of the parking lot as you come around. So does screening or at least vegetated, so it's not a parking lot that interfered to. Towards Main Street in the downtown.
So there would be a fairly significant uh uh grade difference between the parking lot elevation and and Main Street. Um if you, you know, are familiar with the site as it exists today, that grass field that's there is. Um noticeably lower than the adjacent uh Main Street, so. But I'm I'm sure the applicant can speak to that as well.
Any other questions? Uh leave your questions for staff.
Yeah, staff report, yeah. Um, we're just dealing with the one driveway. I'm assuming all that parking is shared with both driveways.
Yeah, I would expect that the condition of approval would relate to both the academy street driveway and the main street driveway.
So both driveways.
Right, I presume that they would not be replaced at the same time, because you'd wanna have one open while the other is being worked on, but.
But the goal would be to make sure that both of those driveways are ADA compliant.
Right.
Got it, okay.
And if you uh feel we need to amend the condition of approval to clarify that, certainly that's something the commission could propose.
It does say approaches, so I think we're fine.
Okay. Then barring any more questions of staff on the staff reporter. We'll now hear from the applicant. So applicant or applicant team, please step up. State your names and your uh mailing addresses. And proceed with your presentation. Pass them around.
It's like there's something happens. Get out of that sunlight. Uh good evening, Richard Rothweiler with A C and Company Architecture. And our offices are located at eleven hundred Liberty Street Southeast Suite two hundred in Salem. So we're the architects for the uh proposed project. And as Chase mentioned and in her slides, ten thousand square foot office building, uh it's wood framed. It's got a partial second floor, uh half the building's a single story and the other half of the building's a two story. Um it's as stated, an office building for behavioral health department for Polk County. The uh project, it'll be a wood frame structure with a uh. Single floor area that's got wood trusses on it um with an attic space for all the HVAC to be hidden, and the two story. Portion has flat roof with parapet and will have HVAC up on the roof, but it shouldn't be seen by any of the side angles. And the site location, which is really the topic of discussion, as Chase pointed out, has two uh defining. Opportunities to overcome. Which is the build to line, which uh even though we go right up to the property line currently for the county, uh we. We're we're not even coming close to meeting the intent of the request in the code for that, so we're asking for the variance not to build two. Um and then, of course, D E Q, they pretty much based on their requirements for cut and fill. Won't let us build it in the grass area. We have to build it in the parking lot area. Yes, that moves the parking lot, replacement parking lot to the other side, but there's a great differential and a planting setback. Um. Five feet? Yeah, five foot setback, which will be fully planted. So we'll be screening it um and the elevation will screen it also. At such time as the right of way is vacated to follow the curve of the road. Um. We have a tentative conceptual proposal to uh create a nice little plaza area there. Maybe there's a gazebo, maybe there's a covered structure. Uh couple of benches and then additional pedestrian connection on the north side down to the project. We're going to go ahead and have. A crosswalk through the parking lot opening. To that extra pedestrian connection so that someday it can hook in. Um so we're gonna build that piece, but just not extend it to the road, because we, the county doesn't own that property, so they can't really build in the right of way. Um. So I think we're handling your concerns on the parking and seeing parking up front as you're coming in. Uh the building will have a nice presence. I I think you'll be pleased with how it looks on the site and you will see it. The parking. While it's in front is to the side somewhat, so you really are gonna be focused on the entry. And I did bring the renderings for you to see, so you can see the the basic look of what we're going for for the building. It should have a very nice presence. Uh in the overall campus and as you're coming into town, we wanted to be very cognizant of that. So um. As was mentioned, we do have a pedestrian connection uh ADA accessible on the south side. Um which will also then give connection over to the amphitheater. So there'll be connection both ways, so uh you'll be able to get from the street down into the development and then over to the the pavilion. So that will be helpful too. Um. And we will uh make sure that is included both driveways. And making sure the ADA is accommodated on both driveways. Uh I defer to Matt as far as the park or the uh building personnel.
So I'm Matt Hawkins. I'm with the county. Uh address is eight fifty Main Street, Dallas, Oregon. Um. So questions, I think, were about the. Usage, is that what you're looking at? So. So this is a uh building being created because we are running out of room in the academy building. Plus, the state is requiring a crisis uh twenty four seven crisis coverage. Uh with that, um we. Even if we just stayed in the academy building, it's not set up to be able to manage that, so the usage of this building is for the crisis team. Um. There'll be a couple of different sides, which is the ability for walk-in uh in the main section there. As well as a uh side, yeah, I apologize, a side section is more um. I guess, secure in nature if need be uh for. The staff, I should say, it's not secure for anybody. Going there, they're free to come, free to go, so.
Pretty much the, and the site plan, the north end of the building is the. The the majority of all the crisis center and the the south end of the building is is mostly, you know, the office and stuff.
Yeah, one other thing I wanted to mention is that parking lot also, a majority of that's gonna be hidden by the hotel that's already there. As you, as you come across or come around uh into downtown there.
So I think with that, we answered the primary questions that were brought up uh a few moments ago, so we are here for additional questions. I know the chair had to step out.
Allergy season.
I, it's really rough right now, yes.
So I, if if that's your presentation, then I'll step in and uh does the commissioner have questions of the applicant? Go ahead, John.
It's just a curiosity question. That's all, because I live here. For a crisis center. Who does that serve? My real question is, wouldn't the the people that should be in West Salem?
No, no, Christ crisis center serves the whole county.
But isn't the population center in West Salem for the county?
Uh there are, population wise, there's more people in West Salem, that's correct. Um all of the county seat, the county seat is here in Dallas. Our county services have always started here in Dallas. Um the people who are in this building will be able to respond to West Salem. Um but. That doesn't mean there's availability in West Salem. For us either.
Just a curiosity question. The other thing, a lot of events are held in that open space. I don't see anything here that would impair that, do you?
No, no, we specifically. Created the development not to interfere with the southeast quadrant of of the of the parcel. Yeah, all we did was add a little sidewalk over to it along the edge of the parking, so we can make sure we had better access to it. But uh yeah, we're not impairing that at all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm back. Thank you. Thank you, Andy, for 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 jumping in.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? Uh planning commissioners of the applicant? So I have one. Um. My first thought was, why not put the building where the parking lot is and put the parking lot where the building is? And you said it was a D E Q concern, could you?
Just so uh.
Just touch on that.
Yeah, I'd really love to have my civil engineer here, so he could really talk about a lot of that.
We don't need to go to that level.
Yes, but um. So if we place the building where the grass is and we have to raise it. It creates a significant amount of cut and fill that by D E Q code has to be balanced on the site. And would actually start to impact the embankment of the creek, which is something nobody wants to touch.
Sure.
So if we move it to the parking lot, it's lower, we still have to raise it, but floodplain issues as Chase indicated. But the actual cut and fill now balances, and we don't impact the creek and we don't impact anything else on the site, so it is. The best solution to um D E Q, to the siding, to the elevating out of the floodplain to minimize impact. All of those situations, however, it requires the variance.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions uh for the applicant at this time from planning commissioners? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh. Stand nearby. If anybody uh has any testimony, you'll have an opportunity to reply. We'll now hear from uh anyone in attendance tonight who.
who does that serve? My real question is, wouldn't the the people that serve be in West Salem?
No, no, Christ, crisis center serves the whole county.
But isn't the population center in West Salem for the county?
Uh there are, population wise, there's more people in West Salem. That's correct. Um all of the county seat, the county seat is here in Dallas. Our county services have always started here in Dallas. Um, the people who are in this building will be able to respond to West Salem. Um but that doesn't mean there's availability in West Salem for us either.
Just to curiosity.
Yeah.
The other things, a lot of events are held in that open space.
Yes.
I don't see anything here that would impair that, do you?
No, no, we specifically created the development not to interfere with the southeast quadrant of of the of the parcel. Yeah, all we did was add a little sidewalk over to it along the edge of the parking, so we could make sure we had better access to it. But uh yeah, we're not impairing that at all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm back. Thank you. Thank you, Andy, for 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 jumping in.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? Uh planning commissioners of the applicant? So I have one. Um. My first thought was, why not put the building where the parking lot is and put the parking lot where the building is? And you said it was a DEQ concern?
Could you?
Just so uh just touch on that.
Yeah, I'd really love to have my civil engineer here, so he could really talk about a lot of that.
We don't need to go to that, though.
Yes, but um. So if we place the building where the grass is and we have to raise it, it creates a significant amount of cut and fill that by DEQ code has to be balanced on the site and would actually start to impact the embankment of the creek. Which is something nobody wants to touch.
Sure.
So if we move it to the parking lot, it's lower, we still have to raise it, but floodplain issues as Chase indicated. But the actual cut and fill now balances and we don't impact the creek and we don't impact anything else on the site. So it is the best solution to um DEQ, to the siding, to the elevating out of the floodplain, to minimize impact, all of those situations. However, it requires the variance.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions uh for the applicant at this time from planning commissioners? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh. Stand nearby. If anybody uh has any testimony, you'll have an opportunity to reply. We'll now hear from uh anyone in attendance tonight who would like to address the planning commission on this item. So please raise your hand if you'd like to testify. Thank you. Step right up. State your name and your address and you've got five minutes to uh ask questions or address any concerns for the planning commission.
Thank you. My name is Ann Bonds, five seventeen Southwest Church Street. I'm the last house on Church Street before the creek.
Okay.
So I'm right across from the Academy Building.
Right.
And you guys probably all know there are homeless people constantly camping there by the creek. And since we're the last house, they tend to sit there at their camping place and stare at us and yell yell uh nasty things in the middle of the night and tweak down the road. We've called the police, we've talked to the commissioners and all that. So my concern, I know it's not really your problem there. But my concern would be if a wall could be built, so if they leave the building, they don't walk across the creek and say, oh, I'll just sleep right here tonight. And go in at eight o'clock in the morning since no one's available to see me. So if a wall could be built, so they're not gonna walk from the building across the creek, down the creek to Church Street. I think that's, would that kind of be part of this thing is just including a wall in the planning?
I don't, I I understand your concern. I hear what you're saying, but I don't think that's something that we can ask the applicant to include it for for this project. I think that that your 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 safety concern would be better addressed to Polk County as a whole, is how they manage the entire property and it wouldn't have anything to do with the development of this project.
I just, I guess I did talk to the county and they said, oh yeah, we're gonna build a fence. Well, I thought, what if it isn't built in the right place to discourage my concern? So I thought if if in the planning, hey, a wall or a fence could be built here if you guys want to do it. But if it's planned so that they couldn't build the wall or the fence, then it's too late.
Well, my opinion would be that that would be something that you would address, could be addressed with the county, not in relation to the development of this project. We're we're considering very specific things, the variance and the site design for this building and the concerns for the rest of the property really are part of our decision-making process here. So I would follow up with whoever you spoke with at the county previously and, you know, uh reinforce your position that there ought to be some sort of a barrier there. But we can't, I, in my opinion, I don't think it's something that we can attach to this project.
So you can't say a fence or wall could be built there to discourage people?
I'm saying it could be, but I, we can't make it a part of this project, in my opinion.
Well, I had to start somewhere. I just don't like seeing these men walking down the streets screaming and waving their arms in the middle of the night. It's like, I didn't move to the end of a dead end road to have all this going on.
I understand.
So and this is a mental health place twenty-four seven crisis people.
Could you point on the map where you are? Because I'm not sure where you are. Where where your home is on the map. And where you're thinking of.
Yeah, that's the Academy Building.
Ah, okay.
On the other side.
On the other side of Church Street, yeah. Cause Church Street goes right there. There you go.
Heard your house.
Yeah, that that's that's my car, so my, so that that's our barn and that's our house.
Got it.
So what happens is people come here and they camp right there.
Yeah. And and the project's not contingent to that.
I just thought it was like some kind of barrier right there. Then if they, if they go to the building and have some reason, they say, come back tomorrow morning. What? Oh, my head. Oh, I'll just camp right here. Well, there's I'll just camp right here. There's my house. So I don't know.
Yeah, I I appreciate your concern and I would, my recommendation to you would be to take it up with Polk County.
Okay, it was, they did say to build a fence, but I I thought building was gonna be like where the parking lot, you know, so it'd be farther away, you know? And then, of course, less parking, you know, we don't have, we can't, our friends can't park in the daytime because of all the Academy Building. Even though there's a parking lot, it's not cool. Everybody parks here. So with less parking, there's gonna be even more people keeping us from parking and turning our RV around and all that, but that's not because of this problem, you know? Does anybody know who I talked to?
Whoever you spoke spoke with before, uh they these guys would know.
Okay, okay.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, you understand my concern and I just thought it should be in the plan that there is a place to build a fence for the wall, so.
We can talk later, that's fine. I just didn't want to have somebody say, you should have gone to that meeting and brought it out.
Well, I appreciate that. Now that's that's that's.
Now you brought it up.
That's good rea- that's excellent reasoning. I appreciate that. Yep. Is there anyone uh uh on the phone?
No callers.
Okay, there's no callers. It looks like uh applicants, you're gonna work it out with her on her concern. Would you like to rebut that in in any way on the record?
Don't believe I want to rebut because I believe it's a valid concern.
Yeah.
Um, the the one thing that I could would like to stress is what shouldn't happen. It's twenty-four seven at that building, so someone should always be available to help with that. The other thing that we've done to help deal with some of the issues that she's uh addressing is that we have signs posted now everywhere that is a lot that has helped allow the Dallas City Police to actually move people from that area.
I see eviction signs.
Yeah, there's actually posted signs now. The city has been very helpful in putting eviction signs in the past. We've put up signs now that make it clear there's no overnight camping
Right.
anywhere on the campus, so we will, I'll be happy to work with Anne and do everything we can to make it a good place, even with our employees parking on your side of the street. I can help address that too.
Small matters, fine, but it's gonna be less parking. It's like, oh, right.
It may be a small matter, but it's still your home. It 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 matters, so we'll address it.
We're all good neighbors here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. You bet. So. Uh. Before I close the hearing, are there any final comments? Uh planning commissioners for the staff or the city attorney? Any questions, any comments that we'd like to bring up? So we're considering site design review for the placement of the building and the variance for the setback of the building from the the uh uh zero lot line requirement in the downtown district. Any other questions? Okay. So I would now declare this public hearing closed at eight thirty-three PM. So this is an opportunity now to deliberate on the on this on this issue. Uh my question was answered. It's like, well, my my initial question was, why are we putting parking by the street and the building behind it? Well, there's a good reason for that. So and I've heard, you know, my my question's been satisfied. Uh it's kind of a campus type atmosphere down there anyway with county buildings and and I'm also, I'll go on the record to say that I'm glad that they're they found a spot for this building and they're not choosing to eliminate uh the public resource, which is the Rotary Stage there. Uh so I think the maintaining that I think is 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 commendable, so. Any deliberations from planning commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion uh on this uh proposal, site designer view and variance, and I believe there's a recommended uh recommended language in the staff report.
I'm moved to approve the application for a site design review in class B variance with the conditions stated in the staff report. Uh one, two, and three.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, it's been made and segmented, so we'll just do a a voice vote. Uh all those uh in favor of the motion uh signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. The motion carries unanimously. An order reflecting the planning commission's decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants in uh participants of record within ten business days. So thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am, for coming in and giving us your concerns. Excellent. So that concludes our public hearings for this evening. Um. We now move on to agenda item number seven, which is other business. Staff, do we have any other business to discuss this evening? I don't start making anything up, so.
Um, I don't know that we have any particular business uh to discuss today that can't wait until next month, but.
Okay, well, I anticipate we're gonna have a vigorous uh public hearing on the subdivision that was uh deferred today, so we can look forward to that.
Indeed.
Next month.
And I know that there are some uh code amendments that'll be coming down the pipeline in the coming months, so just preview of coming attractions.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Based upon concerns or otherwise?
Uh there are some that we've already discussed with you previously that we're trying to fast track and some that are being um essentially mandated by changes in state law.
Okay.
Um some of which will directly impact the operation of the planning commission, so uh we're gonna consult with our legal counsel and kind of dig into that a little deeper to figure out what is we're gonna bring to you, but heads up, we're bringing something to you in the future, so stay tuned.
Legislature was busy last second regarding.
They were busy with a lot of things, yes.
Okay, so uh agenda item number eight, commissioner confidence. Planning commissioners, is there anything else you'd like to bring up or have any comments or concerns that you'd like to 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 bring up at this evening's meeting?
I just want to thank Ben wherever did the tabs on tonight. That's awful.
I asked for, because I was afraid I'd be scrambling for twenty minutes trying to find the right page.
Even though the big one got continued.
Yes.
So we um we we no longer really use the big uh file tab numbers, so we have these boxes of stickers that I'm trying to find a use for and so this is essential use for them, so trying to use them up.
Ooh, thank you.
Excellent. Are there any uh any final staff comments before we adjourn?
I assume we need to bring this first one with us next month.
Well, I you can, but I I I'm gonna operate under the assumption that based on the staff report that was compiled for this hearing, there may be some changes to the plans that are in there, so just stand stand by.
Just trying to save some trees.
Yep. Stand by on that. We can read it all electronically and then have a paper copy when we get here. And also, thank you very much. I asked for, I was away for the weekend and wasn't gonna read that whole thing on my phone or my my tablet. So staff actually printed me a paper copy, so I I killed a tree in order for me to review uh this this uh packet over the weekend, so thank you for doing that.
Um in answer to that question, I would expect that certain things like the traffic study and the floodplain paperwork wouldn't really change between this month and next month, so there are parts of it that will still be relevant, but I I think there are parts that'll probably change, so.
Well, well, yeah. May maybe modified, so. Okay, so uh there's no more commissioner comments, staff comments. City council comments, then I adjourn the meeting.
Can we introduce our our new party over here to everybody?
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, uh my name's Steve Alzinga. I'm at Sherman Sherman Johnny and Hoyt and we recently merged with uh Lane Chatterley's firm. So when Lane's not here, I'll be filling in for him and as he's moving towards retirement, that may occur more and more.
Thank you.
I'm from Salem.
That's okay.
Try not to hold it against me. But uh they asked me to help because I've got a lot of land use experience.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, well, with that, uh I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-nine PM. Thank you very much, folks. We'll see you next month.
Righty.